Okay. I call to order this special meeting of Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty, and the time is five oh one. I will have a roll call starting on my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandra Kravitz.
Patty Beckman.
Allison Beckham. Four governing board members are present, and we have a quorum. All rise. Vice President Beckman, will you please lead us in the march?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Vice President Beckman moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to our information discussion items. Discussion item four A, world language adoption for implementation in the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. Ms. Cheryl Redner, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will be presenting for the world language adoption. Ms. Redner?
Good afternoon, President Beckham, members of the board, Dr. Kriekard, cabinet members, and Mrs. Kowal. It is a privilege to share with you today the extensive process that this committee has gone through and to bring a recommendation to you for approval for world language adoption for implementation in the two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. I'm gonna start. I don't know what that did. I'm going to s- this process began last April. I'm going, I'm referring to the Scottsdale School District website, which communicates internally and externally the work that has been happening. Here you will find the timeline, as well as the meeting agendas, minutes, and presentations. That may be one of our vendors. Which are posted in order to transparently share what has occurred during this time period. Additionally, the general scope and direction that guided this committee work is posted on the webpage. You can see that it is an inclusive committee. We invited representation from every secondary campus, including world language teachers, site administration, parents, special education curriculum and technology specialists, the administrator on assignment, and our director of curriculum to participate. The committee was broken out by languages to include Spanish, Mandarin, French, and Japanese, and led by our world district, our district world language coach. I would like to invite all of those who were able to be here today to please stand and be recognized. Now I will introduce you to Wendy D'ozie, our world language coach, and Lindsay Stoller, our administrator on assignment. They facilitated the world language meetings with skill. We couldn't have done this without their expertise.
To begin the adoption process, we in the committee discussed current programming and components we would like in a new program. We graphed out our priorities and our breakout groups by language. The graphics were used to create our participation letter. Each breakout group created their own rubric, but the same structure was used for all. Criteria was divided into three tiers based on importance. Each tier was assigned descending point values. The subgroups each came to consensus about the final draft of the rubric and its use as the evaluation tool.
The rubrics were then used to evaluate the programs during three separate rounds. After each round of evaluation, low-scoring programs were eliminated. The top three programs were presented to the committee by each publisher. After receiving feedback from their communities, committee members submitted a final rubric score. These scores were averaged to select the top programs.
Again, I want to thank each and every person who served and supported this productive committee. It has been a commitment, and each of them took their roles and responsibilities seriously. Once approved, this recommendation will be funded from the two million dollars originally allocated from the capital override. This includes materials and professional development support, which will involve in-person training, as well as the Train the Trainer model, and online support during the course of the seven-year adoption. We will be bringing this recommendation to you for a final vote at the February eighteenth board meeting, and then I will have the opportunity to start planning those trainings to begin in the late spring, early summer. Next, please welcome some of the participants from the committee who will talk specifically about each of the recommended vendors.
大家下午好，我叫李白璐，我是Mountainside Middle School的老师，我教中文。Hello everyone, good afternoon. My name is Bai Lu Li. I teach Mandarin at Mountainside Middle School. So when I actually, actually first came to the, this district three years ago, I'm very happy to see we have the textbook. But that textbook is also a very popular one for college level. So right now, actually, we're trying to find a more appropriate, like, secondary education appropriate level for Mandarin for this district. So we actually have two choices for the textbook. One is the, from the EMC, which is called the Zhenbang, literally means awesome in Chinese. So I bring the book here. You can see, this is a very, like, appealing book for the students because of the design. They have a lot of pictures, very authentic materials here, and also very much culture embedded. So I especially like the parts, like, they, from the first book, they actually have an introductory part, not just start with pronunciation, everything. They start with introduction to Chinese geography, and also fifty mostly, mostly used Chinese radicals, which is the semantic part for Chinese characters. So you know the Chinese characters are the logographic ones, and those radicals will help the students better understand and to learn Chinese later. The other part, who are really excited, not only me, but students, because actually I did a very short survey with students, with fifty students as sample, and eighty-five, over eighty-five percent of them really like and excited about the online platform. Yeah, so we actually would have the online platform called Passport, and it embeds daily homework, videos, online discussions, and project-based assessment. So yeah, both me and, and all the, all my colleagues and students are excited about this opportunity to actually explore the Mandarin online, okay? Then, but it's a little bit pity that this textbook only have three volumes. So for the higher and more advanced level, we have to choose another textbook. And luckily, we still had, find another book which is really good. The only, like, downside for the new, the advanced level is they do not have online platform for homework. But they ties closely, this is from the same age, which is called Step Up with Chinese and the Step Up to AP, that's the AP level textbook here. So the book is actually ties closely with ACTFOL, the five Cs guidelines for all the world languages. And also, it has the I can statement at the end of each of the chapter for students to review and reflect what they have learned. The part I like the most is actually for the Step Up with Chinese and Step Up to AP. For each unit, they, they actually break it down for four different parts with four different communicative goals. So students especially think about those challenging classes, especially for advanced level. If you can break it down to smaller pieces, it's easier for them to learn each of them very well and eventually complete the puzzle. So we're actually really excited about this selection for two textbook, two textbook series. And we're also very happy to see this Step Up to AP textbook is actually most updated textbook in, on the market. It was released last year, so, and also covers all the themes for the AP themes that will be tested. So that's our recommendation for the book. And now I'm, yeah, I'm going to introduce Lynette Slakel from Arcadia for the French.
Bonjour. Je m'appelle Lynette Slakel. Je suis prof de français et espagnol au lycée Arcadia. My name is Lynette Slakel. I am at Arcadia High School. I teach French and Spanish. I'm here to present to you for recommendation, the Wayside Publishing book for French. And this was basically, pretty quickly unanimous in the French group. We were really excited about this. We were looking for a proficiency-driven textbook that aligned with the ACTFOL standards and had I can statements in it. I just want to show you a quick page, that would be good. As you can see, it is very user-friendly for teenagers today. It's white, lots of pictures, lots of good text, large text. There, it is not a grammar-based textbook, textbook, it's proficiency-based. When we start, when I started here six years ago, we didn't have textbooks, and I was all in for that because of the time, we were moving away. Best standards, best practices were saying, get rid of the textbooks, use authentic resources, and be using things from the culture. And I loved that idea, I was all in. The problem was trying to find the authentic resources at level one and level two, and even level three and four, both in listening and speaking. So when I had the opportunity to be on the committee, I took it because I was really wanting to find a textbook that had a great online platform for those authentic resources. And I really think that Wayside has that. I got to use it this past month because we still had the license. And so we're working in the school unit right now. And if you would allow me just to give you one example, just kind of a little bit of an example. You always have the exercise of what's in your backpack. So as you can see on the graphic, there's Mary Ann, Akian, and Noah. Those were three people that we had videos of speaking about what was in their backpack. The first person literally took things out of their backpack. And then the kids, excuse me, the kids, when they heard those or saw those things, the, all the objects on the left, they checked them off. So the first person literally took things out of the backpack. The kids saw it, they checked it off. The second person just was speaking. She was just speaking, had no visuals. So now the kids are scaffolded up, right? The first thing they saw, the next thing, now they're hearing, having to hear it more closely, make the check marks. The third person, he had things in his backpack, but he expounded. So like with pens, he said, I have a black pen for note-taking. I have a red pen for things that are important. I have a green pen for making all my corrections. So all of us said, and now they're hearing, but I was able to go back and said, yeah, you heard that he had pens, but what was he using them for? Important things, corrections, and the kids were able to talk about it. So I just saw the scaffolding levels rise with each person that spoke. On the right-hand side is where you click. So you can see as a teacher how easy it is. That's just what shows up in the online platform, you just click to the next video. So I was really impressed with that. One other thing I did want to note, point out to you, in the student materials, there is the individual portfolio throughout the program. Wayside does not own that, nor does SUSD, the student owns that. And I thought that was a real big selling point. It can go with them into university. So if they go back to, you know, if they continue in French, or any language, if they continue in French, they can have that with them to refer back to their resources and materials. So thank you for letting me take this time with you. I am pleased to introduce General Harmon, my colleague from Suaro High School.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to come today and presents. Me llamo señor Harmon, enseño español en la escuela de Suaro. Hace catorce años que estoy en trabajo, ah, en trabajo, in Suaro. Enseño español uno, dos, y tres. I am here to present to you why I think that. There we go. Authentico is the authentic book for the Spanish department. While I did express that it is quite and was quite the laborious task, it was a positively laborious task because it allowed us to come together and talk about what components were important to us. As Lynette mentioned, we haven't had a textbook for several years, and so teachers have gone out and found their own resources to find out, you know, what works in the classroom. And so I think that was that opportunity to come together and finally work unified and find what would work with us. And that's where Authentico came in because it met those needs. There has been a shift in learning language over the last couple of years, and we are on board with that. And it's, the shift is, you know, parents will go, oh, I learned Spanish, I don't remember any of it. And, and we're trying to change that with the students. I even have students that come back and say, Ms. Harmon, I'm sorry, I don't remember anything. Well, that's trying to change, and that change is creating that proficiency, that it should be about communication. It's not based solely on grammar, that's not going to be our foundation. Authentico presents different themes that are actually related to our students' lives. For example, in Spanish two, all the kids were excited about getting their permits and their driving. Well, the theme we just finished was how to get from school to the house and give directions. What do you do at an intersection? What do you do when the light turns red? What do you do when there's a stop sign? Slow down on the freeway? And it was really cool because it allowed the kids to really say, oh, I do that in my real life. And so it's been mentioned a couple of times, the book also, at the beginning of a chapter, presents to the students I can statements, which is a big thing for ACTFOL. You're getting in, and kids go, what are we learning today? You know, what's the purpose? Well, I can tell you, the I can statement is, I can tell you what it's like to drive on the freeway. And the students will learn words, vocabulary, and then the grammar part comes in. The idea is that they're first able to communicate the ideas. And the mistakes we can get past, but I want to hear, what can you say, what can you write? And Authentico provides that opportunity by beginning with vocabulary. Each chapter opens with a bunch of vocabulary. And we spend our time trying to get that vocabulary down, and then we bring in the grammar. And hopefully by the end, we have the students do an oral presentation or speaking, I said the same thing, sorry. An oral or written presentation to really show me, what did you learn, what can you do? And I think that's, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with this book, this is my second year with it, and I love it. It's a great foundation to which there's great ideas that I can change and manipulate and use to work for my students. Another great feature with Authentico is it brings technology into the classroom. It allows us to use Google Classroom because we can link assignments from our textbook into Google Classroom. We can do online assessments. Authentico has a data button. We love data. But we can actually really look at, you know, specifically a student, where are they struggling? Is there a question that all the students are struggling with? How much time did they really spend? Well, they go, oh, I spent a half hour on that, Mrs. Harmon. But I can go in and say, well, it said you spent seven minutes and nine seconds. So you can like really look at stuff like that because we want to understand, how can we better support the students? I think that's one thing, that data to show us and the technology, I think, are two really important pieces that we're looking for. But then ultimately, these I can statements that are tied to ACTFOL and bringing that in, the national standards, and trying to help our students communicate. So while I've really enjoyed the book, you know, personally for me, I, I just think it would be really great for our students. It allows them the opportunity to be successful. Having had the book for a year, I have seen change in my students from before I used this book to when we use it now in writing, in speaking. They're more comfortable with it, and there's just been great improvement. So for me, years of not having the text, this is an exciting time. And that's why the task of finding this book was a successful opportunity. I think that it offers the help and support that we need for language immersion for our students. And it allows us ultimately, as a district, to collaborate and come together and really make sure all our students are achieving success. So again, muchas gracias por la oportunidad para estar aquí. I'm going to introduce to you Ms. Chelsea Miller.
My name is Chelsea Miller. I teach Japanese levels one through four at Arcadia High School. Pleased to meet you. We at the Japanese, Japanese program is recommending the textbook Adventures in Japanese. Japanese title Adobencha. We like this textbook because it aligns with ACTFOL standards and it is proficiency-based. The most appealing aspect to us as teachers is, and to our students as well, is that it includes level-appropriate authentic materials in order to give students real-world application and practice with Japanese and the topics they cover in the textbook. It is, the textbook layout is attractive and engaging for students with clean, easy-to-understand layout and vibrant photos throughout. The whole textbook is in color. And it is fully comprehensive. It allows students the opportunity to practice listening, reading, writing, and speaking through a wide variety of proficiency-based exercises, activities, and projects. It also includes culture notes and exploration in both Japanese and English, depending on student level and the topic being covered. We at the Japanese program have been textbook-free for the past couple of years across all high schools in the district. And we feel that Adobencha, Adventures in Japanese, is an excellent fit for how we are, for our current mode of teaching in the classrooms. Thank you. I would like to introduce Thomas Gabriel.
Buenas tardes. Soy Tomás Gabriel. Inseño español niveles cuatro y cinco en Arcadia. Good evening, I'm Tom Gabriel. And this is the text that we are recommending, Temas, so this is Vista Higher Learning. And the first thing I'd like to say about the textbook is, at Arcadia for AP, for the past three years, I've been using it. However, this is the latest version, this is copyrighted twenty twenty, can't get any fresher than this. And over the past three years, our test scores on AP have gone up tremendously. Last year, we had the highest out of eleven students, five scored a five, six scored a four. It's the first year no one scored under a four using this textbook. And I love the format of the textbook, how it challenges students to read and write and speak at a high level in Spanish. And after the process, I had my students actually review the three texts. So we took thirty minutes in class, and I gave them the three publishers' websites and their Chromebooks, and they went through, and I've got some quotes from the students that I think, and they covered pretty much everything that our committee did, and a couple other somewhat funny observations. Some of the student quotes from my AP students. "The articles in the Wayside and Pearson textbooks were not challenging enough. It would not prepare students for the AP exam." Another student said, "The Temas textbook offers many real-world stories and very current. For example, there's a story about floating schools in Argentina. These schools are boats that actually go to rural areas to teach students because they can't get out of their rural areas." Another one is called nomophobia, and that's the irrational fear of leaving home without your cellphone. It was written in Spain, and in Spain they use mobile phones, so nomophobia. The kids loved that story. Another student said, "Academic rigor," she used that word, in Temas is very high. And again, these are the top ten percenters at school, and, you know, five AP. Another student said, "The format of the Temas textbook is very conducive to learning the material. They always have an antes de leer section." So that means before reading, there's a lot of activities that taps into their schema, their background knowledge to activate that. And then while reading, mientras, there's other activities. While you're reading, you stop, you do some more. Then of course, después de leer, they have a bunch of questions that are very much like the AP exam. So they're multiple choice, and then there's persuasive essay writing for every chapter. Someone else said, "There's a good balance between different, different levels of difficulty. Some literary excerpts, some informative, and some historical articles. The comprehension questions force you to go back to the article and reread it, much like the AP exam. The level of the vocabulary is much higher in Temas than the other two textbooks. The level of the vocabulary is much higher in Temas than the other two textbooks. There is no English definitions in the textbook unlike other textbooks, which again forces you to really learn the words and develop a richer vocabulary, not just translating." So the other two textbooks had English-Spanish translations. This textbook is entirely in Spanish at a very, very high level. And then finally, one student said, "The other textbooks were colorful and aesthetically pleasing, but not challenging at all." And so that kind of just summed it up. What the committee, we had spent 20 hours doing, they came to the same conclusion. And it was unanimous, all 12 students came to the same conclusion. So that made me feel really good. Thank you very much for your time, and I will send it back to Cheryl Redner.
So thank you all for your consideration. At this time, we would like to answer any questions with the support from our recommended vendors, many of which are here tonight, and members of our committee who were able to be with us this afternoon, as well as our district world language coaches.
I'd like to note that Deborah Perberg is in attendance and open it up for discussion by President Vickers.
Thank you, that was really informative. I especially liked the addressing us in different ways. That was a nice touch. Could you speak to, Cheryl, the different levels of PD? Not specifically, but I noticed that all of them obviously have different levels that are, and some of them, and PD as needed, I assumed in some of it was unlimited?
Some is unlimited, some is online, some is in person. It depends on the vendor and their opportunities. We also do utilize a train-the-trainer model, which seems to work in our district. So these folks who volunteered to be on our committee, as well as some of our teacher leaders, will be those go-to contacts on our sites. And then, of course, our world language coach, Ms. Daisy, will take care of that as well. So it wanes off a little bit over the seven years we've seen, you know, math. We've done a huge blanket of professional development. We'll start working in May because we have that day at the end of May, and then start back in August. We'll work with our new teachers during teacher orientation as well.
But every single one of them is offered?
Every single one offers something.
Okay, I didn't see it in the EMC for Mandarin. Is that the one, is that offered?
No, it should be.
Okay, I just didn't, must not have.
Just somewhere online. We have someone, I think, on the phone from Maine. And so they've offered to do a lot more online. I mean, they'll come back and forth, but it just depends on what we need. In Japanese, for example, we have four teachers, so that's going to look a little bit different than Spanish, which has a much heavier left of teachers. So it just depends, it's so differentiated depending on the group.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Board Member Cravitz.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on the committee and for the teachers. Your enthusiasm really was palpable. And I wanted to thank, is it Mr. Gabriel? For polling your students. I really, I also enjoyed hearing your feedback as well, so thank you. Oh yeah, gracias, sorry. I took Latin in high school, I apologize.
I gave you all ways to.
I know.
In case your Japanese isn't where it used to be because you don't remember.
That seemed too corny.
Board Member Greenberg.
Just, I fully agree with Board Member Cravitz, but I do note that other teachers brought in students as well, so I didn't, just all to all the teachers for bringing in students, thank you.
Any other questions? Could you back up to the, where you have the breakdown for the budget?
So when you say Mandarin one through three, that is, this is all high school level?
Correct.
Or middle school if we happen to offer in middle school, one through four?
Yes.
Could you just briefly, all four high schools offer all of these languages?
They are offered.
Right.
They're in the course guide.
And then in middle school, what would be offered that they might be using these textbooks?
Well, they offer Spanish in all of the middle schools. I'm looking at Dr. Sacco's. Per school, I'd have to break it down for you, per school. They offer, they offer Spanish.
So some offer French, some offer Japanese.
Right, and we want to make sure to offer trajectory. So if we have a heavy French, for example, offered in the middle school, we want to make sure we capture those students to the next level in the high school. So we want to make sure we're really thoughtful about how we're offering it. But every, the middle schools all offer Spanish, at least. It depends on the population, depends on if they have a want for it, and that differs every year.
Okay, and this I did not, this is not to be answered right now because I don't think you'll have it. But if you could, when you come back the second time, if you could give us an idea, because I was just thinking of this, is the number of students that take world languages?
I have that.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yes.
And what we are projecting, since obviously as time has gone on, we more and more, and we become more global, more and more students are taking it. So what you're kind of projecting now?
Right, so we have those numbers because I had to provide the numbers to the vendors so they could give me a somewhat of an accurate quote on each of them. The tricky thing is, we have students in middle school, for example, who take Spanish one, let's say, and are finished with Spanish one, then matriculate to Spanish two. But then we have students we don't know yet who are taking Spanish one in the high school. And so we have a best guess, and the vendors are very willing to work with us. They're used to this, you know, obviously what they do. So we have the numbers currently as for the orders. And it's broken up by school and levels and et cetera, we have all that for you.
And maybe bring back to, just so that we can just have an idea, maybe a percentage of our high school students that take world language, maybe for, you know, the first two years and then maybe that go on, just so that we could have that. Be interesting to see what that represents.
Do you want it broken down by, let me know how you want that broken down?
Okay, I'll think about that later. It's just something I thought that it would be.
By school and by language.
Okay. And I was kind of thinking of it just as a whole, that, you know, 20% or 40% take the first two years and 15% take it through three and four, just kind of as a district level as well. And but then we're projecting that that is going to be increasing. I don't know what it is, 10, 15% over the next two, three years?
Yeah, and it's hard because we don't know what they're going to do.
Right, but is there a focus to have our students start taking three or four years of a foreign language? And then if we are having that type of a focus, what are we doing to market that focus if we are? I'm just kind of looking generally.
We also have the dual language programs. And so the one for Mandarin started several years ago in the Desert Canyon Elementary School. They'll start in third grade next year. I mean, in a minute, they'll be ready for middle school. So that'll increase that trajectory through there as well. But right now, we're not buying for that, so.
And then, just to follow up with that, are we going to be looking at adopting textbooks for that younger years program? Or because it recently started, we just adopted that a couple of years ago?
We currently work with, we have a person on site there who does the work, and we have ordered, so we order as every year, we catch up every year. We're in second grade now, now we're buying, we're buying right now, third grade. And so then they'll come together at the middle school.
So there's no.
But they're going into third grade.
In the next two years, we're not going to be looking at adopting textbooks for the year?
No.
Okay.
And then several years ago, we bought for the Spanish dual language as well. Board Member Greenberg.
So just for the standards, right? All students have to take two years of world language still? Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so I think, is there, can I ask what the purpose is of the breakdown that you're seeking? What should we be looking at?
Are 100% of our students taking world languages? And then how many students are following through and taking years three and four? Just kind of looking at how many are and then looking at the dollar amount that we're spending.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess, my only thing is that kids can take it at different years of high school. So you can have seniors taking their second year of Spanish. I mean, I know, for French, I was only one of two students in my year who continued through my, through our fourth year of French, and that, it always changes. So, I mean, the numbers themselves seem to reflect kind of the popularity of the courses as they go on. If you look at Mandarin one through three, you have 85,000, and four in AP dramatically drops off. It's not 2/3 of 85,000, so. Yeah, I just want to make, yeah, yeah, I just want to, I just wasn't sure what it is you're.
Just curious.
Okay.
It's important to be mindful that an in-state requirement for world language is two years and out-of-state is three years. So that's why you would see students go beyond their second year onto their third and fourth, when they're applying for out-of-state colleges and/or they're also looking to pursue that language in post-secondary studies.
But they do not need a world language in order to graduate high school, minimum, bare minimum to graduate high school.
So we want everybody to do that.
Correct.
So we encourage that, and we want them to continue of course, but.
No, I, believe me, I highly encourage it. I was just curious what the specifics were. Because a million seems almost like a low number.
Who would have thought?
Yeah, I mean, I would have thought it would be higher.
But you also mentioned that this isn't the full adoption, that you're going to be looking, didn't you mention somewhere that, is it next year, you're also going to be looking at some additional adoption?
That's for the dual.
For the dual.
The dual language.
Yeah.
That, because you allotted $2 million, you're using a million now, but you're probably going to be spending some more.
Right, we continue, right, we continue to do that all the time. We're always backfilling, especially at the dual language, with the dual language programs at Desert Canyon Elementary School. We want to make sure they have the materials they need. It's brand new, we haven't taught third grade yet, so, yes. Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For you and your committee also, thank you for attending. We'll move on to discussion item 4B. It's the first read of proposed revisions to policies BDF, advisory committees, BE, school board meetings, BEC, executive sessions and open meetings, and BEDA, notification of board meetings. General Counsel Michelle Marshall will be presenting the proposed revised policies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Precard, Sandra. I provided the board with red line drafts of each of these policies as well as a summary of the proposed changes. As President Beckham said, this is your first read of these policies. I will also note that these are the last policies in Section B that we have updates for, so we will have finished that section after your second read of these. I'll pull these up in alphabetical order, starting with policy BDF, which is entitled Advisory Committees. As most of you and most of our audience know, advisory committees are those that are created by the governing board as opposed to superintendent committees. And when the board creates an advisory committee, that committee must also comply with open meeting law. The changes to this policy, which we do already have in place, but except for this light blue language here, D, is that this talks about if an executive session is authorized, that all applicable requirements presented in another policy that I will show you have to be followed by the advisory committee just as if the governing board were having an executive session. Minutes to be taken and available for public inspection, just like with the governing board within three days. Any questions or comments on that before I move to the next one?
So board advisory committees are open to the public?
Yes, they are to be open to the public, just like any regular meeting of the board.
Okay, but superintendent committees, are those open to the public as well?
No, they are not.
Okay.
They can be, but they're not required to meet the meeting.
They can be, but it's not required, okay.
Board Member Greenberg?
On that note, what is, other than who forms it, is there any other difference between what is considered an advisory committee or ad hoc committee in this case versus a superintendent's committee?
It's really just, was it appointed by the board? Did the board get together and a quorum of you vote to create this committee or appoint people?
Thank you.
The next policy, these all are essentially cleanup of these to update. A lot of these are related to the open meeting law. Policy BE, called school board meetings, which we do have in place already, except for the light blue language, clarifies that what can be considered a meeting under the open meeting law. And the first blue language that you'll see there is that a one-way electronic communication that proposes legal action is considered a meeting under the open meeting law. Likewise, the second part here, if there is an exchange of electronic communications among a quorum of you, in our case, three, that involves all those things that can be a meeting, discussion, deliberation, taking legal action regarding a matter that is likely to come before the board, that is considered a meeting. And so those electronic communications, as Chris Thomas shared at our annual training, are areas that we have to be especially careful in to not violate the open meeting law. This language down here in blue, it just says that we will, that we have meetings at least once a month during the school year and that we may hold others as often as the board decides it's necessary.
I'm sorry. Isn't there an exception in the law for July?
I don't remember if the law states July, but it's just during the school year we'll have meetings. And we have to have regular meetings.
But doesn't mandate once a month, we do not hold them in July?
Right, correct, because it's not.
Right, because the school year is over.
Oh, during the school year?
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So in essence, we wouldn't have to have it in June or July, but we do hold our meetings in June.
Yeah, it's good to have a meeting in June and pass the budget, yes.
That little thing of having a budget, yeah, that's a good thing to have.
Any other questions?
Okay, if there's nothing else on that one. The next one is policy BEC, which is called executive sessions slash open meetings. And again, at the beginning of this policy talks about what you have to do to have an executive session. And this addition to subsection or paragraph D just states that you have to vote on going into executive session in an open session, which can be at the current meeting you're in. Or I've never seen the board do this in my time, but you can do it, vote at a prior meeting to designate the time for the executive session. I don't think I've seen that in my time here, but. And then this language, sorry, have we? This language here that I'm highlighting just states the requirement that we always meet when you're meeting under subsection A1 for discussion about an employee or applicant or officer, that that person gets 24 hours, at least 24 hours notice in advance of the meeting. And as you may remember, that person can request that everything except salary discussions be held in public. That's a rare request as well, for obvious reasons. And finally. Oh, sorry.
Anybody have any questions? Board Member Cravitz?
With regard to exec sessions at the Bolts Conference, sponsored by the Arizona School Board Association last week, Chris Thomas, the general counsel for ASBA, did a review of open meeting law. And during that review, there was a discussion about attending exec sessions telephonically. And he said that that was not a good practice because you do not know who else is in the room or if someone is recording the exec session. So I would like to include language that all exec sessions must be attended in person, following the best practices recommended by the Arizona School Board Association.
Board Member Greenberg?
What? I'm sorry, I don't, I'm.
You don't understand. Ms. Marshall, do you want to explain?
You're suggesting that one of, that we, when we call into these meetings, are recording these, I mean, we record these sessions.
I'm not suggesting it, it's a possibility.
Yeah, but I mean, we're told that we should have an internal auditor, and you don't support that, so.
Well, let's keep focused.
We're talking about executive sessions right now.
Correct, so I'm completely opposed to that idea because some of us have jobs.
If I could, I wasn't at that Bolts training, but it is a best practice to be in person. But we certainly could talk about, you know, saying something on the record that states that, you know, no one else is in the room or, you know, having that kind of acknowledgement or something like that. We could certainly talk about putting something in policy or a regulation to that effect. Why don't I take a look at what other districts have in that regard? And I'll even give Chris a call and see. It's definitely a best practice. This is an ASBA model, and they don't put it in the model. There may be a reason why they did that. So I'll bring back to you some feedback on that suggestion.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that part?
Any other comments?
Okay.
We'll move on.
Okay, I think we just have the last one here. BEDA, which is called notification of board meetings. Again, really just kind of, wait a minute. What did we change? I think this is the final, sorry, I pulled up the final instead of the red line. My mistake. There it is. This one again has that notification when you're meeting under subsection A1 of the executive session statute, just stating that we'll provide an employee or officer 24 hours notice of the meeting. And that's the rest of Section B.
So does anybody have any questions for BEDA? All right. I think I will go back to BEC and maybe just get a little clarification of Board Member Kravitz's request. I know that she attended last week the Bolts training. And I know that there's some confusing looks up here. I think that the confusion is, is it's not geared towards any one individual. It's just that there is a risk out there because other people could be listening, which is why when I mentioned it to our general counsel, she said that she would look into it and that there might be best practices that we just make sure that we ask the individual to make sure that no one is in there. And I can give an example. I was in the car when I got a phone call and an executive session was brought up. And I said, excuse me, I cannot talk because my son is in the car at this moment. And so I think, and I said, we will call you back when no one is with me. Sometimes inadvertently, thinking that you might have a younger son that isn't even listening and could have earphones on, but you could forget that you should not even be talking if somebody else could be in earshot. And I think that that's where it comes from because it's so easy to forget. So it's not directed towards anybody. It's just best practice.
Well, I just want to be very clear that our attorneys can call in to executive sessions. So by putting anything that prohibits people who have jobs or other obligations not to attend, that would be, I'm, I'm very happy to put in a thing that, that we, that we certify or state on the record that there's nobody else in the room, but to actually do anything that would prohibit people from doing it telephonically would just be nonsensical in an organization like this.
And that's why we have these discussions, so that we can vet all the ideas and then research and see what is best practice. So I appreciate both of you, both board members bringing up their views. So thank you.
So it sounds like I can bring all but possibly BEC back on consent at the next meeting, and then I will follow up with the board. I will do my best to do that well in advance of the next meeting so that we can, you can have an idea of what I'm suggesting for policy BEC based on this conversation.
And then we can decide.
All right.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Marshall. Next item is discussion item 4C. It's the first review of the 2020-21 capital outlay budget. Mr. Jeff Gadd, our CFO, will be presenting the first review.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Your packet contains a PowerPoint that does represent the first review, and there's some significant highlights that I want to share with you before we get involved in more of the detail. The highlights really appear over on page six, I believe. It's in the lower right-hand corner of each of the slides. It's on page two. I'm sorry, I'm just late. Page two. The, the summary capital budget that you'll have some study of shortly involves multiple funds of those that are eligible for capital outlay, but some features that are important to understand. One, we've included in, in the first columns called the district additional assistance. It's the title for capital outlay. Includes the governor's entire restoration of funding that was removed from school districts some four or five years ago as a way for the state to balance its budget. That's a full $3.4 million. So we ought to make, we ought to understand that there isn't any more restoration money beyond what's already shown in here. It continues, but it doesn't grow. So that's important to know. Number two, that it has two-phased textbook adoption, subject areas, social studies and English language, is included in the projected budget for this coming year. A fairly significant investment, the most significant investment the district has made in a long while for textbook replacement, $3.7 million. Classroom technology has also had a considerable emphasis, emphasis added to the extent of $6.2 million with a goal of a one-to-one student device ratio. And something that will bear further discussion at some point is going to be the district's plan to satisfy a major maintenance plan. The board will recall that the maintenance plan has been reliant upon bond to the tune of $7 million a year. That ends when bond ends. Ends large, and it's necessary because of the sizable square footings that we have under oath. So we have started that plan of concluding 1.2 million in a fund that does not involve bond, but it needs to grow each year for the next three or four years in order for it to get to somewhere between $4 and $5 million as a reasonable sum. It's about a dollar square foot, a reasonable sum to have available annually. So that's something to keep in mind. The bond program, as you remember, was primarily rebuilds and bus replacement. That was its intention and is doing that. It's not an intention typically that you would have an ongoing annual capital budget for maintenance to be reliant upon bond because it means then that it has to find a home when the bond funds expire. So with that said, I'll go back and kind of go through the summary with you. And I'm not sure if this first version, if that works or not. Okay, we'll go to the second version. That's the same summary, only larger so that we can follow it better on a PowerPoint basis. The five funds across the top represent those funds that the district has access to annually for capital purposes. The ongoing, the ongoing amount that's intended by the legislature to be available schools each and every year is called DA, and that's in the first column. That represents somewhere in the neighborhood when it's fully funded of about $500 a student per year. That is the intention of that fund, and anything that the board, anything the district would do beyond that has typically some unique needs and may or may not be very continuing in terms of what those are. So the capital outlay override is the second fund. That is a vote to maintain it. It's every seven years. It is currently limited to $8.5 million annually. It can be higher than that. The board has chosen in its approval of the ballot wording to limit it to 8.5. It could go as high as 13. So it might be a funding source the board might want to look at as we move down the road and that bond begins to expire, is that reauthorization has to occur in 2023. And that may be the time that you increase the amount on the ballot. It will have a minimal tax rate effect. It's currently 17 cents for the entire eight and a half million. 13 million probably will take it somewhere to the neighborhood of a quarter, maybe 30 cents at most. So it's certainly not a major tax rate implication. And I would encourage you to look at that strongly as you move down each year in the capital planning process. As the bond moves lower, you need to look at those additional funding sources. It would be ideal to develop a plan then in 21, 22, and each year thereafter to add one to $2 million in a funding source for major maintenance that is not currently identified here except bond. And if you move over to the far right-hand side of that summary, there's, the, the bond program will appear, and you'll go down that column to line eight, and you'll see the $7 million. That's the number that needs to be gradually replaced with that amount or slightly less in one of those first two columns. The adjacent ways fund, the board authorized a levy to provide infrastructure funding, and we've used about half of it, so we still have about half of it to go. It's connected up directly to individual rebuilds. There are eligible projects connected up with those rebuilds that require or allow us to use a separate fund. And then of course you have the bond fund. Excuse me. On the bond fund, I have listed here every amount that we have left available for bond to its exhaustion. So this, the way you read that bond column is that there are 56 million that's unallocated is all that's remaining for the board to award. It would include KIVA and whatever other rebuilds, if any, you would want to do beyond KIVA. Both HOCOM, Cherokee are budgeted for down in line eight. That's the 45 million that you see down at the lower portion of that column. And then the safety and security and maintenance and the bus money, and that's basically the entire bond. So if you look at it in its entirety, you, you basically have $56 million that is unassigned. And if you assume that maybe 25 million would be necessary for each rebuild, two rebuilds would use up 50 of that 56. So this bond will start to diminish quickly if you commit to two rather than one rebuild. And it will, it, it just shortens a bit the life expectancy of that maintenance plan and of that bus plan because that, those funds in order to continue would need to have, can't be offset by the, the amount that you would need for rebuild purposes. So.
Mr. Gadd?
Yes. Certainly.
Sorry, sorry. No, I shouldn't interrupt, but I just, I want to be very clear. Are you saying that's the amount of bonds that we have on hand because we've sold them? Or are you saying that's the, all that's left in total for, I thought our bond was 219 million or 17, something?
Right now, that amount is the amount remaining that either has sold and we have it in cash or is to be sold. That is the amount that we're talking about here. So the amount that's uncommitted or unspent, I should say, and sold is in this column. And the amount that is available to be sold is also in this column. So we're, we are talking about the entire amount, the commitment amount. And maybe we need to come back to that. I have some folks here in the back that may need to help me with that subject. But my understanding is that, that, that plays out, I would think about, right, in terms of Navajo, of course, is also part of the 45 million. But I would think that we're in that neighborhood of having two remaining schools. We've committed to three with Navajo, Cherokee and HOCOM. So that, there would be two remaining, five total. And the five, the two, the two that we have not committed to are in the upper.
Well, and I see that there's a question there. So this is why we do the first read so we can go back and we can confirm what, we can confirm that.
Tyler, you may want to come up and give a rebuttal.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tyler Moore. I'm the county manager. Yeah, Jeff is saying that correctly. So we are estimating at the start of 2021, 22, that that is the remaining bond with both cash and authorization. So if you reference like your bond monthly report that you guys received, you'll see there's a remaining balance of 70 million roughly to be sold. That amount is expressed in there. We felt that would better portray the overall picture of the bond at this point and its life cycle.
Well, then that is a question because then the unallocated would include that 70 million if we have 70 million unsold. So we'll have to relook at that to make sure.
Right, so there's 70 million, or wait, okay, wait. Is there 70 million in addition to the 56 million? Or is it 20 million more? Is it just 14 million more than the 56 million?
No, there's 14 million more, yeah.
Right.
So like part of that, we, currently, currently the cash on hand would barely cover, I mean, the amounts that we've authorized with Cherokee. And then HOCOM coming up, we would need another sale again to continue the maintenance plan and HOCOM.
Right, okay. And how many schools have we, have we rebuilt now?
Or have committed to.
Or, or we've committed to. We've done two. Three.
Pima, Hopi, Cherokee, HOCOM, and we started the.
And Navajo.
And Navajo.
Yeah, with part bond, part trust.
Right, that's really.
So that's five.
Right.
Right. So the two schools of that 56 are would be KIVA and then Pueblo. Those were the two that had been mentioned in the past.
And we set out to do eight schools? That was how the bond was sold? Is that right?
No.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that was a number that was in the, in the ballot. That was one of the numbers that was being thrown around, but not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Sorry.
This may be a question for Dennis. Do you recall what amount from the pamphlet we had committed to with regard to the bond funds with the maintenance plan and et cetera and the bus plan?
It was 219 million, I believe.
No, I mean, what percentage of that total dollar amount that we would be going out for with the bonds?
Yeah.
There was percentages that we would be committing to for just maintenance? Like there was life cycle?
Oh, that was all included. So it was, it was three bullet points. There's, the whole bond in its entirety was 229 million.
Right.
219 was renovation, remodel, life cycle. That was all in that one bullet point. Then you had a bullet point for buses, and then you had a bullet point for safety and security.
And so I'm just curious. And I can ask Dennis. I think it was 20 million that we had for life cycle that we had committed to, and there was another amount. So that's what I, and I'll ask him. He usually has that ready lead. I know he's not here, so not a problem. Just thought maybe if you knew.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Gadd?
Okay. All right. So school plant is the last fund that's on the list here, and that comes from a balance that the district has had for some time in having sold assets. And this one also now reflects that recent sale of the old district office that is in here. It has, it's got no assignment currently as to how you want to expend it. The important thing to recognize here is this is one-time money. It doesn't repeat itself.
And what are the, what are the limits on what we use that for?
Unlimited as long as it's capital. So I think that's kind of covers for you the highlights, and so we'll kind of go to the content itself. We try to have an unallocated amount in some of these where it makes sense. And we have a small contingency in the DA plan. And by the way, the page number is out to the left-hand side. If you wanted to go back. If you wanted to go back into the PowerPoint, then the page number that coincides with that description will give you the detail of what the district is planning to use that money for. Another highlight that's important to note is that in here, there are a couple of amounts in the DA column that come from that strategy we talked about at the last meeting, where we would take the additional, some of the additional ADM money that we received or will be receiving from accurately estimating the ADM, which gives us more students, of course, and more money. There's one million dollars on line six, the third, number six down. It's in technology, and that is listed there. And then there's the other amount, which is one-point-seven million, and that is over on page three, back at up a little bit. You'll see down on line thirteen, if you go across line thirteen, you'll see nineteen, twenty, one-point-seven million dollars textbook adoption. That, if you go back to the detail, will provide for that social studies and language arts adoption on a phased basis. So of this total in this DA count, two-point-seven million dollars is coming from nineteen, twenty, from this current year, and it's coming from the ADM count that we were able to receive. Also, remember what the plan does when it goes to phase two, is it drops this from capital outlay in twenty-one, twenty-two, and pushes it into MNO in twenty-one, twenty-two. So we are banking money this year, not only because of the lateness in time of knowing it, but as you remember from the three-year financial projection we did, after the salary money from the governor runs out this year, this coming year, there'll be a, there'll be a shortage in MNO, no doubt. And then that two-point-seven could help with offsetting that shortage, depending upon where other districts have decided to go with their salary and benefit package. I can guess where they're going to go, I've watched them for long enough, but, and in order to keep up with that progression, and if you don't, you'll find yourself non-competitive. We already are not, Dr. Kikard will be sharing with you, I think, some salary comparisons we did with six other peer districts. It shows us barely in the middle on the beginning salary on the VA. So we are, we are certainly not the highest paid in the valley, and if we don't keep up with whatever those other districts decide to do, then we'll become more and more non-competitive with that beginning salary. So that's the plan, and what, the ramifications of that, of course, are in this DA column. There'll be almost three million dollars less to budget in twenty-one, twenty-two than there is in twenty-one, because it's moving out to another fund. So we have to keep in mind that we're going to be shrinking this capital budget to some extent by the implementation of that strategy that we talked about earlier. Okay, so all the more reason to begin to think about what is a, what is a viable long-term capital plan? What do you want to do with that subject? It involves two elections that you currently have, a bond and a capital override. You want to continue both, you want to continue one, you want to continue none. What are the priorities beyond what we're looking at currently? Is there program requirements, are there facility requirements that will become, maybe they'll become evident if we decide to do focus schools or magnet schools, or whatever you want to call them. That's going to be something that a new administration will need to think about, what those priorities are, because it's going to be upon you fairly soon. You know, next couple of years, you're going to have to develop some idea where you want to go with that. Okay, let's see. We have, I'll try to move through the PowerPoint here a little bit on a detailed basis, I won't spend a lot of time. Copiers, we're finishing off replacing copiers, old copiers in the district. We're doing a lease instead of a purchase, so that we have some advantages of keeping maintenance money in capital rather than in MNO. Classroom technology, the new areas there would be, I'm not sure we have, yeah, we've got the student ratio. You see the two-point-seven being devoted in the override to next content areas for a one-to-one student ratio. That's, that's a new one. And then there's smart replacement, computers, smart boards in phase two that also are relying on the capital budget. So what to keep in mind here is, is much of this rollover money that we're using from this year to next is being directly invested in classroom technology, a significant amount of money. So that may be, for your knowledge, but that may be something to think about as you try to move back in terms of how much the total is. Remember where the pieces that were inflated were along the way, and one of them is technology has been, has been significantly benefited from the plan that we currently have.
Mr. Gads.
Yes.
We have a question from the board member, is it, are you finished with that part?
Debbie, you might. Debbie, you might want to come this way?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if, it's such, in theory, looking at all our expenditures, it's, it is kind of a small number, this, this leasing.
Figure.
But I actually just want to spend a little bit of time on it, because it's kind of an interesting thing that's occurring here from, if I understand it correctly, we usually purchase our copiers and printers. But with that, there's maintenance fees that come along with it, that comes out of our maintenance and operations budget, and that's about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that correct? Is it somewhere around there?
Yes, it's between three-fifty and four.
And by doing a lease, it's a little more expensive on the front end, on the, from, out of, coming out of capital. However, the benefit is that it removes that maintenance and operations expenditure into capital, which is covered by the lease agreement, and that's one of the things they do. So it's a little more expensive if, from the capital perspective, but it saves us on the MNO side. And that's obviously our current issue, while we do have to plan for this capital, and we have, we can see our budgets tightening there over time. The biggest issue right now is the maintenance and operations. So I don't know if you want to talk a bit about that, as to whether that's smart, but I just, I just thought it was an interesting.
I think you've stated it well, Mr. Reimer, that is the largest financial advantage. The other advantage is with the vendor, is, is, you know.
They're responsible.
They're waiting on lease payment, a monthly lease payment. So if you're unhappy with the service, you stop the payment cycle, and we'll have their attention very quickly. If there's, if those are owned up machines, then you get their attention in a lot, you know, a lot more time. You don't get the reaction that you would like. So it's done not only for financial reasons, it's done to guarantee in the agreement, whatever the turnaround time is from the time I call you to the time you're there to fix the machine. If you're not doing that, don't look, you know, don't, don't look in the mail for the next payment. So it's got, it's got, on a piece of equipment like, like copiers, it's got some real advantage.
And another advantage that we have is, we had put together a five-year replacement plan, and we've done two years so far, but so this will let us, this year, purchase the remaining, or lease the remaining, so that all of the copy machines are now new, because some of the ones that we still have in our fleet are about ten years old. And they're struggling. The vendor keeps them up and running, but we have to call in a lot of times, and, you know, four hours without a copy machine is a long time when you need to copy a test for your class for that day. I've been there.
A board vice president.
For clarity, this is, it's four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars annually, this is the year one for three years, and it's renegotiated, is that what I'm assuming?
So we are doing a three-year lease, so that at the end of that three years, what we would like to do is to put our entire fleet into a lease, so then we can do either a three- or a five-year lease. So we wanted to end it when our first machines are five years old, so that at that point they're all five, and we can keep refreshing. It actually comes out a little bit less than the four-hundred-and-fifty per year, but it's about that.
So I'm going to trust you around the cost analysis of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to follow up, because I don't, I heard your question, and I don't know that I, I heard the answer. Is that, it's a three-year lease, is it four-hundred-and-fifty thousand every three years? So each budget.
Every year.
Four-fifty, four-fifty, and four-fifty, is that what I'm hearing?
Right, so right now, we've been purchasing out of capital about three-hundred-and-fifty a year, and then we're paying another four-hundred, three-fifty, four-hundred, for the maintenance contract. And the maintenance contract is, they come out and they fix any issues, and then they also pay for all the toner.
Oh.
So it's, it's a big dollar item, so that, and that's for all the copy machines, not the printers. But it's to get, get it all into the same cycle, and then also, we'll be spending about the same amount of money, but we'll have all brand-new machines.
This will effectively double or so, once you get those ones that are still over, and that we own, that we pay for out of MNO, at five years, right?
It would be more in five years. Okay. But it's about the same amount that we're spending now.
A board member, Crabbitt. I just wanted to clarify, these are new, new machines, not new-to-us machines, because at one point we were buying off-lease equipment, because that was going to be the big savings.
Right, and that was, of course.
And they didn't save us anything, because the maintenance guy would be on location just about every other day. He was like a regular staff member of some of our.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay.
And we corrected that. When we started the purchasing a couple of years ago, two years ago, we corrected that, because we didn't want that to happen any longer.
Is this, is this common at other school districts to lease this type of equipment?
Yes.
Sorry, I just, I thought it was an interesting discussion.
We would, we would like to tell you that we thought of this first, and we're way ahead of the game, but unfortunately, or fortunately, there are a lot of other intelligent, innovative people out there working in business offices and looking for ways to save money, because you don't run your school district if you don't find ways to save money and run it more efficiently. We don't have a lot of loose change just hanging around.
So that begs the question, then, for any of our other, you know, technology items, have we looked into that? I assume we have, or are going to, with regard to owning versus leasing?
Well, when I first started here, I was told that to never bring a lease to the board, because they were averse to it, is what I was told by my superiors. I was not told by a board member ever. So we did not look into those options, but since Jeff has come in, we've been talking through other options, and so we can look at that for other technology as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Gads, want to continue?
Okay, onward. And Debbie, for you, go completely away. There is another slide on technology. It's got some transportation software in it that helps us become more efficient with routing. That is next to the last item on the list, it's called VersaTrans. We have an enhancement to our financial system by purchasing a module for travel reimbursement is on, on this list here. Mrs. Crabbitt, you remember, we talked about this uninterruptible power supply, that was on a previous agenda item, to keep machines, computers, servers up. Debbie, anything else you want to comment about up here that you want to make sure the board's aware of?
I'm happy to answer any questions, but the UPS, that's for elementary and middle schools, because this year we're doing the high schools in K-8. No, I said that wrong. We're doing high schools and middle schools this year. Next year will be K-8 and elementary.
Board member, Crabbitt, the transportation software, is that a licensed fee, or is that the actual software? Because I feel like.
It's a licensed fee.
Oh, okay, because we, I thought, but that's not for, is that new software? Because I feel like we purchased, or that's for the software we currently have.
It's, it's new software.
It's to change our software from one vendor to another vendor, that typically, transportation departments prefer the VersaTrans.
Okay.
And so it's to move to them, and then they will be hosting it. So it'll be off-site, the data will be off-site for that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And this is the projection, so that has not been brought to the board for approval as of yet.
It would come next year.
Okay.
The purpose is, when, when you have a needed change in software, as big as our district is with its, with its bus fleet, thirty-five thousand dollars is a good investment at this point to make, to get on the right page. That's what we're doing with it. Okay, there's one other question. Land building, Cherokee, twenty-point-nine, Ho-Com, twenty, Navajo, four-point-two, that those are the board commitment amounts. That maintenance plan, that's the seven million I talked about, is currently devoted to exterior painting, stay, high school stadium and field renovation, ADA access, you know, the security remodels. So there's quite a variety of projects contained there. The DA, phone six-ten, that's the portion of that total is that we've just added to the DA plan, the DA amount for maintenance. And it's, it would include the typical HVAC plumbing and other kinds of facility needs, including asphalt and that sort of thing. Okay, playground equipment continues, that's an override item that was bullet pointed. Capital facilities is a new one. That one is, just to see what we get, we got back requests from fifteen schools for miscellaneous capital projects that they would like us to consider. Because currently, remember, they don't have a vehicle to do that. It's either in the bond as one of these major projects, so this gave them an opportunity to make some requests. Dennis and I are going to go out and do a little site visits next week, so we can take a look at what they are asking for. And so I, I think it's good to hear from schools who, you know, have some needs, they've not been necessarily addressed, because they kind of, kind of got lost in the shuffle and never got asked. This one, whether we can fund it, I don't know, half a million dollars is up here, yes. It's something that you're going to maybe have to retain as, as a line item, because once again, that bond goes away. These smaller projects that these schools would like to do, whether it's a remodel of the office, or science lab, or whatever, we need to find a, a place to budget that, and that's what the nature of this category would be. And then safety and security is continuing with the six-hundred, or with the three-hundred thousand. The schools receive ADM-based money for furniture, forty dollars a student, that's a million-dollar program. District offices, we put some money in the budget for that. We don't have a lot of specifics on that, just depends on kind of what comes along, and now with the change in administration, there'll be some, some changes, I'm sure, that will involve furniture and equipment. Lair house, new forklift, and then in the communications department, we just set aside again a dollar amount to deal with, whatever software upgrades we might need to do here from a, from a market standpoint. Vehicles, this is the largest effort the district has made on its white fleet. It continues to make the effort that the bond called for with the eight-hundred thousand dollars for buses, four of them. The white fleet was never identified as a place to spend money on vehicles. It just never was. We have, we have about two-hundred-and-five non-bus vehicles that carry our logo, and they're, and some of them are in pretty bad shape. So we have decided, at least this year, that we had a little extra money, we decided to put some money into replacing some of these. That's the list that you see here. There are about thirteen on that list that almost reside in the maintenance department, and trying to get back up to where we should be on a twenty-year replacement cycle. And we're still quite a ways. And we're still quite a ways off of that. So that's what that is. It's a, it's a relatively new item. Transportation and maintenance and warehouse and food are the ones that primarily use these vehicles. They've gotten together and come up with a prioritized list. Our library, that's been on the capital override bullet point list, 3,000. Schools get 100, district gets 300, 200. Fine arts, 500. And then total, school, district gets three and the schools get two. And then fine arts. And curriculum adoptions. This is where Dr. Guerin may want to reply, respond a little bit to this one. But this one has got 3.7 million dollars in it, as I mentioned earlier. Two of which comes from the continuing funding, 1.7, comes from the addition of that 1920 monies. And it's got the social studies and language in it. And it's for fiscal year 2021, followed by an elementary school allocation that will need to be there in 2122 in order to complete the adoption on a K-12 basis in both subject areas. Is that right, Kim? Pretty clear?
Absolutely.
So that's, that's that program. Part of it, and Kim may need to, because I'm no expert in this area by far. But once we get through the core subject areas and get those up to date on adoption, the board may have some funds here. It might look at using another way. We'll see how that turns out. But we're, we're making quite a, quite an investment, both this year, next year, year after. So hopefully, we're getting to the point of, we just made a big one with math. Science may be the one that we need to still do, but we're, we're getting there on those core subject areas. Okay. I'm not sure.
I have a question. Board Member Cravitz?
The funds that, and I'm, I'm getting off topic, just tell me, it's for another time. The funds that our students and parents pay for the fine arts fees at the beginning of the school year, where does that money, under, what pot of money does that fall?
It goes into a cash control fund.
Cash controlled fund? And how do we know, is there some? Do you keep some sort of a record of how those? I mean, I've never, I mean, I know it's a lot of money that we collect from students.
We collect it for the purpose, the fee structure, the fee schedule that the board has approved, put it into that appropriate fund. And then use it for the purpose of what the fee was levied for.
Right. And so the teachers who teach those subjects know how much funds that they have to work with?
Yes, they do, probably better than M and O.
Okay. In addition to whatever funds that we're allocating here. Okay, thank you.
Is that in community yet?
No.
No, I don't think so. Like, what fund is?
I think the fees you pay for orchestra.
Yeah, also, that's the.
Shannon, is it auxiliary operations?
Okay.
Auxiliary, auxiliary operation. Athletics, we've got some money in the override that's been bullet pointed there. You can see how we've spent it in the past. And that's it. So that, Madam President, members of the board, it's a pretty, I think, a pretty comprehensive review of all of the different capital funds. And I hope I've left you with the, with the thought that planning now is, in the next two or three years, is going to be important.
Any questions? I know that's a lot to digest, so I'm going to encourage us all to contact Mr. Gadd with any questions that we have and to fully understand the suggestion on raising the tax slide. Is that, that's just not a concept that, you know.
What's so interesting about that one? I thought the, I thought the.
Take the time to really understand it for our community.
What President Beckman is referring to is you, the, the authorization maximum, just like there is on M and O, is 10% of your operating budget. So I just assumed, you know, for a while, hey, well, they, they passed the election, they must have 10% of the operating budget. But then I got looking at the dollar amount, the dollar amount looked low. And so then, as we began to check more, we moved from the pamphlet, which had 8.5 in it. And so as soon as you saw 8.5 in the pamphlet, you knew that there was some issue because you could mentally take 10% of the operating budget and get over 13. So then we looked at the ballot. And interesting wording in the ballot says that the value of the election is 10% of the operating budget, in essence, revenue control in it, or 8.5 million, whichever's less.
Who wrote that?
I didn't write that. I wouldn't have written that.
No, I don't think.
We don't have control.
So, back in '16, somebody decided it was a commitment for eight and a half and not a commitment for 13. And so that's now limited us with that five, that extra five we could have by simply asking the board to approve it in the budget. It's not, it's not available. So when you do revote it, you want to leave out the lesser of and you want to simply put in 10% of the revenue control limit, which is what's in the statute. I, I'm highly, if you do continue.
But there are some nuances to it that we can discuss and then.
You, yeah, and you know, you would have a new pamphlet, new bullet points, new election. Whether you want to wait until year seven occurs and forego that extra money between now and then, 2023, that's up to the board. If you wanted to do something about it earlier, you can. And if it should not be successful, you would still have the authorization from the old election for 8.5. So it's something that if you were going to do it, let's say for November, in June, this coming June, you would need to make that decision and call for the election.
So we have a lot to think about and digest and process. And I know that we will all be doing that because I'm sure our community, if they ask questions, we'll answer them.
I think Dr. Goodcard and I were hoping that we would, we would not have another election to at least partially, you know, administer. I'm afraid that may not be the case. I don't know, we'll see. They're not a lot of fun sometimes.
Well, and that's why you said that, that proactive planning is what we, we need to be looking at now.
Yeah.
So that you're just not caught off guard in the future. Any last questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Gadd.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Board Member Cravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Vice President Beckman, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye, motion carries five to zero. There are no action items tonight, so we'll move on to adjourn this special meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Cravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. This special meeting on February 4th, 2020 is adjourned at 6:32 PM. And don't you agree, because we are moving into an executive session.
I'd be disappointed.
Yes, it was. Do we want to just?